I'm not as, quite as technically advanced as Carolyn is with the race meetings. Just doing things simply. I just don't have the screen like you guys. Thank you. I told Jim to remind that I've recorded this. For everyone who Jeff asked you to remind me to record it, I've started recording, so. All right, well, we'll go ahead and start. I feel a little more formal and limited than I do on Sunday mornings since I will need to stay here for the people online to see me. I won't be moving around. Let's start us off with prayer. What I've appreciated is through this process, even when Bishop Snazey and others have led us through discussions about this at conference and other places. It's been a strong emphasis for us to pray for guidance from the Holy Spirit and just remember the scripture that says, if you lack wisdom, that you can ask God and He will give you wisdom or guidance. And so we'll pray, join with me in prayer. Lord Jesus, all of our hearts are yours. We open ourselves up to you. Pray that you would lead us and be glorified in that. That we lay Berkeley United Methodist Church at your feet and look for your guidance. Relay the United Methodist Church at your feet, Lord, and we pray for your guidance for our whole church. I pray in our discussion today that you'll bring us peace and help us understand more clearly. And ultimately that you will guide us and direct us to your will, in Christ's name, amen. All right, the Curtis's have joined us online. You guys here okay? Is that good? Okay, excellent. All right, so today, as I've shared, I just wanted to share information about the current state of the United Methodist Church. And to kind of give you an overlay of what's going on and then kind of what's coming up. One of the biggest reasons I did this is just because people were asking me a lot of questions either that they were hearing from the media or their neighbor about what was happening with United Methodist Church. And I know there's a lot of misinformation out there, and so really just trying to clear that up. And so that's really our primary purpose. I shared with you some notes. I'm gonna take a minute actually to share this with Susan and Ray, so give me just a minute so they'll have this. Sharing this with Susan with your email, so you can have the sheet of notes that I've made. So on my notes, what I share with you, I wanted to clarify a few things. Today, I'm wanting to inform you on the current state of the church and the disaffiliation process. Some of you may have heard of that, maybe some of you haven't. And really just the status of the church. Today is not to debate the issue around human sexuality when it's within the United Methodist Church. That is a conversation I'm willing to have with anyone and open to that. And I think at some point, it would be a good idea for us to have that, but today we're not doing that. So I would ask if you have any thoughts or questions about that, we say that for another time again. I'm willing to sit down and talk with anybody about it in any way, fashion. This is not a disaffiliation meeting, which I'll explain later, but some of you may have heard of this. Part of the process in a church disaffiliating from the United Methodist Church is they have three official disaffiliation meetings. And so I'm being very clear that this is not the disaffiliation meeting that's required. This is really only for information. And then, like I said earlier, just to clear up some misinformation. All right, so at the heart of this issue, and Sandy reminded me of this and several of you did, that Wilson led you through a book discussion about the state of things at that point. And you all read the book together and had that discussion. And a lot of things have changed since then, honestly, a lot that you discussed that day is not necessarily relevant anymore. Not that it wasn't an important discussion then, but it's, I'll explain later how things have changed, really the landscape has changed since then. But really, this issue centers around the United Methodist discipline, language on human sexuality. And just to clarify for those who may not be clear, the discipline comes out every four years after General Conference. There's a section of the discipline that our brother John Wesley said, this can never change. And that's kind of the foundational theological foundations of the United Methodist Church. However, each year, the General Conference approves the discipline for the next four years. And there are changes that can and will happen then. And so, and the discipline is really the authoritative stance for the church as a whole. The General Conference that meets every four years and the discipline are the only things that really can speak for the whole United Methodist Church. So 1968, I'm getting ahead of myself. So a few things about the language that we're talking about. Another thing I printed out for you is the UN Discipline paragraphs. And so on that page, it's two and a half pages worth, you'll see the exact language and we'll look at it today. This is the exact language at the heart of the issue. And these ones that I printed out are specifically the ones that are at the heart of the issue. And so we'll look at those. So you see in the first one, paragraph 161F, which is actually in the social principles of the discipline. This is what it says, and this is a broad statement about sexuality. We affirm that sexuality is God's good gift to all persons. We call everyone to responsible stewardship of the sacred gift. Actually, I'm gonna back up just a little bit. What I was gonna say is, I'm gonna share my presentation today and then I'll feel free to ask, answer questions afterwards for clarification and understanding. But just want to make sure that you know I'm gonna give you a chance to share thoughts and questions. Although all persons are sexual beings, whether they're or not, they're married. Sexual relations are affirmed only within the covenant of monogamous heterosexual marriage. We deplore all forms of the commercialization, abuse, and exploitation of sex. We call for the strict global enforcement of laws, including the sexual exploitation of children, and for adequate protection, guidance, and counseling for abused children. All persons, regardless of age, gender, marital status, or sexual orientation, are entitled to their human civil rights and insured to be protected against violence. The church should support the family in providing age-appropriate education regarding sexuality to children, youth, and adults. We affirm that all persons are individuals of sacred worth created in an image of God. All persons need the ministry of the church and the struggle for human fulfillment, as well as the spiritual and emotional care of the fellowship that enables reconciling relationships with God, with others, and himself. The United Methodist Church does not condone the practice of homosexuality and considers this practice to be incompatible with Christian teaching. We affirm that God's grace is available to all. We will seek to live together in Christian community welcoming, forgiving, and loving one another as Christ has loved and accepted us. We implore all families and churches not to reject or condemn lesbian and gay members and friends. We commit ourselves to be in ministry for and with all persons. There's also language in the discipline that basically says, as far as membership and participation in the United Methodist Church, that there are no restrictions according to age, religion, age, ethnicity, et cetera, including sexuality. So one of the things that I want to emphasize for sure is that the debate we are currently is not about whether the United Methodist hates or does not allow those in the LGBTQ plus community to join us and be involved in the church. And so honestly, a couple of people said that to me. Isn't this about whether we hate gay people or not? Just to be very straightforward, that was the question I asked. And what I want to be very clear is, from the United Methodist stance, that is not the issue and that is not the question. From the United Methodist stance, even folks and especially folks in that community are welcome to participate in the ministries of the United Methodist Church, to be involved, to be members. And so it's one of the things that I wanted to speak to and address. And so what I share with people is, if that's the reasoning that they would pursue certain things within the church, then it's really not a question of the discipline. It's a question of what God leads us as Christians to do, to be caring and loving for folks in that community. Okay, so then you see after that, in the qualifications for ordination, paragraph 304.3, we'll be on the back page. While persons set apart by the church for ordained ministry are subject to all the frailties of the human condition and the pressures of society, they are required to maintain the highest standards of holy living in the world. The practice of homosexuality is incompatible with Christian teaching. Therefore, self-avowed practicing homosexuals are not to be certified as candidates ordained as ministers or approved to serve the United Methodist Church. And so you'll see under that, the explanation that self-avowed practicing homosexuals is understood to mean that a person openly acknowledges to a bishop, district superintendent, district committee of ordained ministry, board of ordained ministry, or clergy session that the person is a practicing homosexual. And so that's the language as far as ordination goes. Below that, 341.6, you see homosexual union shall not be conducted by our ministers and shall not be conducted in our churches. And so those are the primary paragraphs that concern it. The ones underneath that basically have to do with discipline for those who are brought up on charges of anything in the discipline and speak specifically to this. It also talks about no funds in the United Methodist Church are used to promote certain things. So you can look over that, it's not as important for today's discussion. So those three paragraphs on human sexuality, on ordination, and on same-sex unions are really the three paragraphs in the discipline that have been part of the conversation. So if you see in my notes, this language has more or less been what the discipline has said since 1968. 1968, the United Methodist was formed in the union between the Methodist Church and the United Brethren Church. Anybody remember when that happened? Some folk are. And so that was the union and so the United Methodist discipline specifically has been since then. And the language of these three points have been that, in essence, some of it, the language has changed, but that's the essence of it. In 1972, which was the first General Conference after the formation, there was petitions that year for that language to be either changed and/or taken out. And basically, every General Conference since then, there has been some petition to change and/or take out that language. Every General Conference, the language has been reaffirmed to stay in the discipline. So the United Methodist Church on a whole has voted for the stance of the church to say the same. In 2016, in the General Conference, it was probably the most, well, I can't say that, I wasn't necessarily there. It came to a head and basically the session reached out to the bishops and said, we don't know what to do, we need your help. And that's when they established an organization called the Commission on the Way Forward. This was a commission made up by different clergy and laypeople, including some of the bishops. And they were to get together to make a plan for where the United Methodist Church should go in regards to this. They brought that plan to the church and there was a special called General Conference in 2019. The Commission on the Way Forward put forth their recommendations. And then there was also, what was come to be called as the Traditional Plan, was also put forward that session. The Traditional Plan basically stated to affirm the current discipline. So in that 2019 special called Conference, the Traditional Plan was approved. And so, which basically affirmed the discipline. And there was some other extra stuff that I would say is not necessarily important. It called for more accountability, basically, for the bishops. But also, in that special session in 2019, it created less legislation through which a United Methodist Church could peacefully disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church. And it said technically, for conscience sake, around the issue of human sexuality. Out of that was, if you look at the next paragraph, starting at the bottom of the second page, paragraph 2553, that was created in 2019. I won't bore you with reading that. It basically says that a church is given the freedom to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church and either join another denomination or to become independent. See if I'm getting ahead of myself. So I'll come back to that in a minute. So 2019, this happened, so there was a lot of anticipation for 2020. And I know that that is when Wilson had you read the book and go through some discussions on what was gonna happen in 2020 and the possible legislation that could happen there. Let me clarify that. Did he have you read that before the special session or before, leading up to 2020? I know that's a little technical, but. Okay. So he had you read a book leading up to the 2019 special session that really, that probably described what the Commission on the Way Forward had come up with, the different options, is that not right? Okay, it didn't talk about the plans? Okay. But that was leading up to 2019. So in 2020, again, there was a lot of legislation that people anticipated to, again, change the language. Or there was a possibility in 2020 that there was some plans there that there would be a possibility of what you might call some type of a soft split. Doesn't really matter going back now, but that was coming up then. Obviously, 2020, May, everything was shut down. They postponed that to 2021. They thought, you know, a couple of weeks COVID will be over, we'll meet next year. 2001 came up and then they ultimately postponed General Conference to 2024, which seems very far away. But there were many voices in the United Methodist Church around the world that they couldn't guarantee they'd be able to travel until then because of COVID. And it was very important to the General Conference that the whole church had voice when it came to this matter. And so that's why it was postponed to 2024. So, no, one thing for sure, in regard to the United Methodist Church, nothing can happen and nothing will officially happen until 2024. And so a lot of conversation, people have come and said, well, I heard your church was splitting, I heard there was a split. And it's like, it cannot happen, there's nothing official with the United Methodist Church that happens until 2024. And that's one thing, that's one of the misinformation that is out there. The church is splitting, that this is happening, and just to clarify that that's the case. Yeah, sure. And I will get to that. But what I'm saying, as far as the United Methodist Church goes, on the whole, nothing has changed and nothing will to 2024. But I will come to that. And so now, what I want to do is kind of explain, and probably many of you know this, maybe all, but just for us to understand, kind of for lack of better terms, these are what the two camps are called when it comes down to this debate over human sexuality. The traditional view is affirming the current discipline. And there are people on the spectrum of this, but as far as the traditional view primarily, those are the ones who are convicted that they cannot be a part of a denomination that affirms the homosexual lifestyle in any way in regards to marriage and ordination. So some of the plans in that 2019 were that churches could kind of decide which camp they would go into, which for the traditional view was not affirming the discipline. And most in that view would say they couldn't be in a denomination that that was affirmed in any way, if that makes sense. Those that are considered progressive, those are the ones who have been petitioning to remove or change the language on human sexuality. And they have continued, people in that camp have continued to come more convicted that they cannot be a part of a denomination that does not include the LGBTQ plus community in full participation, which means also ordination and to be able to have unions within the church. And so I say that, those statements right there to me is what has brought the church to really mutually exclusive, not being able to be in the same denomination because of those two things. One of the questions that was asked in our leadership team, and it was a very helpful question, because they say if, they said if the, well, I'm gonna get back to that in a minute. So the Wesleyan Covenant Association was an organization within the church that was organized at some point that began really supporting the traditional view. And for the Wesleyan Covenant Association, there came a point for those, so those would be the ones kind of supporting people with the traditional view. What they saw is this, there are people within the church who are doing same-sex marriages within United Methodist Churches and United Methodist clergy who were doing same-sex marriages. And there were annual conferences who were ordaining those who were self-avowed practicing homosexuals. And really, for those in the traditional view, the kind of head of it came when a bishop in the CEPAC Conference, I can't remember the name exactly. When the bishop that was chosen for that annual conference is a self-avowed practicing homosexual. And so according to the discipline, if those type of things happen, then the people who are doing those are supposed to get disciplined by the bishops. And from the view of those in the traditional view and the Wesleyan Covenant Association, that discipline was not happening. And so this was the question I got with the leadership team. For those that are moving to the Global Methodist Church, that I'll explain here in a minute. If the discipline was being affirmed by General Conference, why is it that those are the traditional view that we're creating and moving to a different church? And this is what the Wesleyan Covenant Association, this is why they asked for the disaffiliation process in 2019. Because what they saw is the church, the church was not staying true to the discipline in the ways there's in practice or accountability. And so those in the Wesleyan Covenant Association felt like they needed to start a new denomination that reaffirmed those things of the discipline. And they would say that it was about much more than just this issue, but Orthodox doctrines that they felt like that many in the church had moved away from, that they wanted to affirm those and really ask those that were, as far as clergy goes and churches goes, ask them to commit to those Orthodox doctrines. So really, since the 2019 session, and this is to answer Jim's question, the Wesleyan Covenant Association and those involved have been moving toward creating a new denomination. And that denomination did launch in May, May 1 of this year, the Global Methodist Church. This is when probably your neighbor came up and said, oh, I heard that your church split. Just know that the Global Methodist Church is something completely independent of the United Methodist Church. It is a new denomination that's formed. I can't give two sermon long messages in a day. So that did launch. And in that 2019 special session, it was put forth the process by which a United Methodist congregation could disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church. Which means that they would leave the church and either they would form, join another denomination or go independent. Now, if you read the discipline, the primary thing that really, well, there's a lot of things, that one of the technical things that keep United Methodist Churches in connection is that the annual conference holds all the property of any United Methodist institution. And so in the discipline, if a church was going to leave, then they would have to forfeit their property to the annual conference. This was, to me, the biggest and most generous concession of the 2019 General Session, when a part of that paragraph 2553 is that a church disaffiliating because of this issue for conscience sake could leave and take their property with them. To me, it's a huge concession of the United Methodist Church. The other part of that, paragraph 2553 says that if a church is leaving, that they have to pay the current years, finish paying the current year's apportionments and pay the next year's apportionments. And then pay what they called the pension debt. And in layman's terms, as far as an accountant goes, I'm a very laid accountant, this is the best way I understand what the pension debt is. Is you're basically paying the pension of all those clergy who have served at your church. So it's not like you're paying something that goes to the denomination, it is to provide for those clergy that served at your church. And that is determined by some crazy mathematical formula, I'm not gonna get into that for sure. But what I did check with the conference about two months ago, I checked on what the pension debt would be for Berkeley United Methodist Church. At that point, it was about $45,000. What someone explained to me is, as the interest rate has risen, that that pension debt goes down. Someone there could probably explain why that happens, I have no idea, but it is something that's a little bit in flux. But those are the requirements of the United Methodist Church that wants to disaffiliate. Each annual conference has set forth the guidelines for the churches within their annual conference. And what I'll say about the Rio Texas Conference, I brought a copy of the official statement of what it has to say. I would say the Rio Texas Conference has worked very hard to be very gracious about it. And you may or may not have heard of things going on in other annual conferences. I believe our bishop is very fair in many ways. And even at annual conference, what Bishop Snazey said, if your church decides to disaffiliate, we want to bless you in ministry. And he asked for that church to invite either the bishop or the district superintendent to come to their last worship service as United Methodist Church, so they could pray for them and bless them as they go forward in ministry. And so Bishop Snazey really has established a mindset within the conference that if that is what a church in the conference feels they need to do, they want to bless them. And so this document that he put together has kind of that language that states that. And then the technical part is really what I explained earlier. The church owes any debt that that church owes, they're able to take the property that that church has worshipped in, and then they'll owe the apportionments and the pension debt. This document is on the Rio Texas Annual Conference, and also, if you would like to see it, I'm willing to send it to you. I didn't want to kill a lot of trees and print these out, because this is pretty technical language, it's not necessarily fun to read to. But the reason I wanted to share that with you today is. But the reason I wanted to share that with you today is that, that has been made available and there are churches within the Rio Texas Annual Conference who are in the process of disaffiliation. About a month ago, when I, I got some information that there are approximately seventy churches within the Rio Texas Annual Conference that are pursuing that. And someone helped me out, I believe we have four hundred and fifty churches in our annual conference. Anybody else help me confirm that near, some, somewhere around there. And so that's to give you an idea. And so most of the, these that are disaffiliating, they have to go through at least a six-month process. That, that process is delineated here, I won't necessarily go through that detail. But the process does ensure, does involve the whole church peripherally discerning. They have to explain why theologically they're making that decision, both for their church and why it is good for the community in which they serve. They have to give a very formed, uh, statement on what they're going to do as far as joining another denomination or going independent. But just, they have to give a lot of reasoning of why they're choosing to do this. There's three meetings that are required with, uh, an annual conference, emineral conference representative there. And after those three meetings of discussion and discernment, which has to take at least six months, then the church votes and if, and if a two-third, two-thirds of the membership votes for the church to disaffiliate, then that's true for them. And then that has to become before the annual conference to vote on those churches also to disaffiliate. Now, they're making it very clear that churches don't have to go through that process. Those, those that are staying United Methodist Church, there's no necessarily decision or vote to be made. That is only if a church is deciding to do that. And so what, this is entering my opinion in a little bit. I believe this is working for churches that have a very, uh, that most people in that, in the church have that view on it, the traditional view, and it makes sense for them to do that. And so as far as those that are doing that, that's what I would say, I understand.
Yes.
Change a little bit because I was one for language, language or I get all this information along some list. But a couple of years ago, before everything you've just described about coming to some sort of rational agreement about what you could do.
Yes.
There was a thought that people were going to leave and the Methodist Church was going to, you know, put a padlock on the door, excommunicate you, crucify the minister, you know.
Whoa.
It was horrible, but there was some people that were afraid of that. I was receiving about two emails a week from lawyers out to defend the church against the Methodist Church who wanted to leave. But that, that whole thing has, has gone away because there's a process, I mean, it's, it's not two groups backed into a corner showing each other an anger conference, a general conference. There's some consensus about how you could do it, how you leave, just the kind of thing you've been discussing. It seems to have been sort of calmed the waters a little bit.
This is for our folks online. Jim Barnes is, is just describing that he received emails about lawyers that are getting involved in this. But now that this process has been outlined, that that doesn't seem necessary. I will say this, uh, there are other annual conferences where this has been much more controversial. Uh, well, that's conflictual, I guess I'll say. And so there are churches within the United Methodist Church that have, have hired lawyers and that are suing the United Methodist Church to basically, to get more, whether that would be not paying those other two things that I talked about. And that they were very nervous about the, the property issue, although that paragraph answers that. So if, that, that is happening, there are some annual conferences, that's confidential, there are some churches who have hired lawyers to sue for more.
There were, just in these examples, were not, that where they left the Methodist Church team and took the property bulldozed, sold it to an apartment complex, you know, just cashed out more or less, that's what was making me angry. I think that that whole notion is, I don't know, it may still occur.
You're, you're saying. So Jim is saying there are times that you heard that that actually did happen or people. So Jim is saying that he's heard at some points that some annual conferences have come and basically locked churches out of their, uh, property. And if that has happened, I'm unaware of it, I know the fear of that was there. Yes, Cindy?
Um, the churches that are hiring lawyers and suing, and many of the businesses are suing because the bishop of that conference has imposed more requirements. It's not trying to get more or not, not follow this right here. It's that the bishops in some conference have added additional huge amounts of money required to leave in contravention of the process that was passed by the only office that is in charge, which is the general conference. So the lawsuits are over. Can't add more.
Uh, thanks for that clarification. Sandy, again for our, our folks online, Sandy has talked about instances where there are some bishops in annual conferences who added more restrictions to those that are wanting to leave. And that is why some have hired lawyers just basically to, to resolve that. So thanks for that information, Sandy, I wasn't aware of it. So really the last thing that I wanted to share is, so when it comes to Berkeley, Berkeley United Methodist Church, what does that mean for us? And a lot of times people are thinking about, there is a time we're going to have to come to a vote to decide which side are we as a church on. Now, until the general conference of 2024, that's not a possibility. Nothing has happened in the United Methodist Church, we can continue to go forward as we are. My opinion is that even in the general conference of 2024, I don't think it's going to come down to a situation where it's going to draw a line and we have to decide one another. Who knows what's happening 24, 2024, this is what my opinion is. If the churches, um, to give you a, a feel for the makeup of the United Methodist Church now, uh, the churches in the Africa and Asia are, are the majority of the United Methodist Church now. And really any official vote is going to happen by what they decide. The United Methodist Church in, in the US is now so small, our, our vote is really, uh, it's not going to be a major part of it. The question is, is, are, are many of these churches in the African and Asian churches, are they, are they going to disaffiliate and go to the Global Methodist Church? And there, there's different opinions on whether that or not that will happen. If many of them do move over to the Global Methodist Church, then there is a good possibility that in 2024, the language of the discipline would be changed. If they don't move over, then it is very unlikely that the change, the, the language would change at all in 2024. Uh, but those things, I'm sure there's a lot of opinions on that, but I really don't know. I do know that those in the African church, they feel no need to leave the United Methodist Church is, is kind of their historic view. And that, that, that is very important to them. Uh, but I'm not going to speculate on what's going to happen there. So as far as we go, uh, this, these are my thoughts about it for Berkeley. You know, for fifty years, Berkeley United Methodist Church has been in worship and ministry and fellowship together. Increasingly over that time, obviously, this issue, uh, the, the seriousness of this issue has become more important. We've continued to do those things, even though we know there's people in our congregation who have views on the different, different side of this issue. My hope, and I, and I'll, I'll be honest, I don't know exactly what this would look like. But as we approach, if there's ever a decision that needs to make, that we would approach asking for the spirit's guidance of how can we continue in ministry together? What would that look like for us? Without having the denomination come in and say, you have to decide one way or the other. And then I'll be very honest, if, if Berkeley has to make a decision like that, I don't think that the church would survive uh, because of how much that would divide us. And so one of the things I'm asking us to do is that we would just be praying God for guidance. How would you have us continue together as a church in ministry and worship? Uh, and fellowship as we go on. But right now, as far as Berkeley goes, this, this does not have, uh, an impact upon, upon our official connection with the United Methodist Church. And nothing really can or will happen until 2024. If there is, uh, a group or people within, within our church who want to, uh, begin these disaffiliation process conversations, I'm willing to visit with you about that and have that discussion. I'll say, I'm, I am not going to initiate that, it is not my plan. I desire to do the best I can to lead our congregation through this. Uh, and like I said, if there's a group of people that want to, want to start that, I'm willing to have that conversation, but I'm, I'm not going to initiate it. So those are the things I think I would have to say about it. Uh, what thoughts or questions do you have? Go ahead, Lita.
Procedurally before a general conference, because those who are putting petitions to the general conference have to present that documentation ahead of time of what their actual proposal for changing that or whatever is going to be.
Yes.
Do you anticipate that 2024 is going to be any different and is that going to be made available ahead of time for going into the 2024 conference? We know what is actually going to be discussed on the table.
Gotcha.
I think in the past, people have, the average layperson hasn't even, uh, known that that existed or be, paid any attention to it. It's definitely something that happens every four years.
Gotcha.
To me, going into 2024, it's going to be a much more, um, it's going to be on a lot more people's radar to see exactly what is going to be proposed in 2024. And I think that that's something that would be available through the conference websites, through the general conference or, and I don't think it's anything that's ever been, it's for people, it's just been a, a lack of, you know, that's why everyone's taking a lot of, I don't want to read all that. But I think it's becoming much more.
Okay. So Lita is explaining, again for our folks online, Lita is explaining in, in the general conference, uh, those petitions that come before, uh, the floor, she's asking if those will be made available so that people could see what discussion is happening. Uh, the process will buy, anyone who is a delegate to the general conference is allowed to, is invited to put a petition toward the floor. However, any petition that comes is given to a, a committee that would oversee that, whatever question they're bringing. That committee that is the one who forms what is going to be discussed on the floor. So if a person, and I've seen this happen watching general conferences, if a person stands up and makes a petition, that they're allowed to speak and allowed to do that, but they're, they're not, the, the general conference is not going to vote on that petition right there. It has to go through this committee and then basically filter through that. So anything that is given to committee that's going to come up on a day, uh, on the floor, that will be made available. So anybody could go and see what that's going to be. Does that answer that for you?
Yeah, and I know that going into the 2020 conference, there were quite a few representatives in the capital district that were actually a, a part of that. And, um, you know, it's not that it's that committee is formed from a group that we have never heard of, will, will never, it's a lot of local people from all over.
Yeah, Lita is, is expressing just that, that, that committee that worked on that in 2016, that some of them were from Rio Texas Annual Conference. Yes, our, our annual conference is very active in this discussion for sure. Bishop Snazey was on the, uh, commission for the Way Forward. And some of our lay delegates too.
Something that's a little bit unusual is the, if what you read is to, to begin with, what the current discipline says is very much the Global Methodist Church where they want to go. Because they were afraid that this is all going to change. They thought in 2020 or 2022, wherever, that we were on the cusp of all of this changing.
Right.
And to say, not that we don't support gay ministers, we don't support gay marriages, they, they expected the discipline to be changed to say, we do support all that. But it's kind of odd that we're, we're talking about leaving a group that is, or they were talking about leaving a group that is on paper a hundred percent in line with what the conservatives or whatever, Global Methodist Church believes. But they were, they were convinced that it can change, maybe it won't, that could.
Yeah, Jim, Jim is saying that, you know, those that have formed the Global Methodist Church, that they, they affirm what we read in the discipline earlier and were afraid that that was going to change. Um, I will say that yes, uh, being around those in the traditional view, that has always been a concern, that it would change, it has continued to be affirmed. But what I believe is that the reason that the, the, the WCA and those involved in that went ahead to form the Global Methodist Church is because although the, the, uh, the discipline had been affirmed, that it was not being upheld and especially that the discipline action wasn't being taken. So those in that forming the committee said, well, it was a part of the 2019 also that the bishops would base, that there was legislation put forward that the bishops would do the discipline that was required. And because that wasn't happening, then folks, then the folks forming the Global Methodist Church said, we're just going to go form it so that we can ask everybody that commits to it, that they would, they would commit to those disciplines, basically.
You're basically ignoring homosexual culture and marriage.
Sure.
You know, it's a big deal, but.
Right.
It's odd that the, the rules of people doing that are exactly what they want the rules to be.
Yes, and, and the current form discipline of the general, uh, Global Methodist Church is almost a carbon copy of what the United Methodist Church was. Yes, Cindy?
I, I think what you're saying, though, you're right, it's not that they are worried about rules going to change. It's their, what I read, when I read their things, it's the conflict. They're tired of being part of a denomination that is in constant conflict. They want to be ministered, they don't want to be fighting these battles. Uh, one other issue that you had mentioned was, there's been way before the Wesleyan Covenant Association, there was the rec, there's the reconciling churches movement. In contravention to a judicial decision that said they could not, that could not be, they wouldn't have them are doing it anyway.
Sure.
And so it's that constant, we're going to do what we are going to do. And if no body politic can exist, it keeps going real.
Yes, I agree that for those in the traditional view, that, that has been a concern for a long time. All right, yes.
I may just not be understanding this, but then those who are not disaffiliating.
Yes.
The same.
Right.
UFC, but that the discipline will not be necessary.
Right.
What will then those who have been articulating for this change? What is it, were they going to disaffiliate somewhere else?
I mean, it, it's a fair question. Uh, there, there are some, I mean, there, there are those within the progressive camp that feel like they cannot be a part of a denomination anymore that holds to that. And so some of them, as a result of the said, we're, we're going to do that anyway. There are also some in that camp that are disaffiliating too, uh, from the United Methodist Church because of that very reason. Some of that happened even, even before this process. Yeah, sorry to clarify, uh, for those on the live stream, Rachel was asking about if, if the discipline doesn't, doesn't change, uh, what about those within the United Methodist Church who still disagree with, with the discipline, what will they do? And that's when I answered, some of them have moved out, some of them have done those things very specifically in, um, what would you, in resistance to kind of the, the authority. Um, Jim said, this is sad, and that, that I would agree with. So one, one of the questions, and, and this is probably, this is, uh, this is free, this is more my opinion than you paid for. Uh, some may have asked, why have I been here for two years and haven't addressed it? Uh, to me, it's a very important issue in the United Methodist Church. I would, I would definitely agree with that. Uh, my biggest problem with this whole thing is that people on both sides, and really I would say almost all of us. it has distracted us from what I believe is Christ's primary call on us as members of the church and the church ourselves, that we would be about building up the body of Christ that we're in, and we would be about ministry to those in our community. And so, although this is an important issue, it's almost intentional that I've done this the last two years, that my main focus has been inviting people closer to Christ and inviting people in ministry. I'll tell you, oftentimes when I'm thinking about this, I think about one of our neighbors over here, Julio, that I've been in conversation with, about his, the possibility of him opening himself up to Christ, and we're just talking about and learning about that. And I think about this issue, and I'm like, you know, he doesn't really care, and it doesn't really make that difference to him. And so although I want to faithfully lead our congregation in this and what we do, I will continue to have ministry for us be the focus as far as the things that I have control of. So I, and so my call for us as a church is, yes, that we would take this seriously and decide what we want to do. But primarily, we commit ourselves to each other, to encouraging each other in the body of Christ, and to be in ministry to our community around us. All right, so that part was free. You didn't have to pay for that. Yeah, Rachel?
I just can't quite wrap my head around if the progressives are the ones staying, so to say that.
Yes, right.
If the conservatives are saying, you know, we're not really going to change the discipline. Does that mean for the progressives, those who wanted that change all these past years? What are they going to say if they're not that ready to get it?
So Rachel is saying, if the progressives are those that are staying and the discipline continues not to change, what are they going to do? And I think it's a fair question. It's going into way more of my opinion than you want if I talk about that. I am unsure about what churches that would see themselves as primarily progressive would do. I'm not sure. The pastors that I know that I'm in conversation with are really focused, they, in their mindsets, they continue to be focused on pursuing legislation to change it. There are some that are committed to their vows to the United Methodist Church and the discipline. And so, they're not, they're not performing acts outside of that. Others have decided that they are going to do that because it's that important to them. But I have no idea what churches will decide to do. And whether it's going to change or not is really, it is unclear.
I just want to thank you for one thing you said, I'm sure you all remember my sermon in Slade picture, but.
Everybody's got it memorized, word by word, yes.
Working on, I saw the ladies across the street from me, they were getting a couple of women on the lawnmower, and I went over and helped them get it started. And they said, I'm surprised that you're going to be able to help. Well, you must have heard that I'm not very good handyman, so I'm surprised too, to be honest. But they said, no, we heard that you go to church all the time. And so, they assumed that because they were gay and I went to church, and actually, I wouldn't want to have any to do with them, I wouldn't help them, I wouldn't be Christ-like. I mean, I'm a long way from that, but I didn't mind working on the lawnmower. That's a part that troubles me with whatever rules and regulations there are, we kind of forget that, you know, Christ was different in order to will prostitute or, I mean, we've got a job to do besides. There's what's right, and we should aim for that, but I mean, they're living in the world and doing what we should do.
Jim is reminding us of the story of his neighbors, and which is basically saying that there is a perception in this world that those that go to church don't love and are even hateful and against those that are in that community. And what I'll say to that is, that this is a huge black eye for the United Methodist Church, that the perception of how people see us. And the media is going to do with that what they're going to do. But there's no doubt that that is the perception. And the only thing that's going to change that is if we pray for people, and if like Jim, we go across the street, when we encounter people, whether they're in that community or not, but we're thinking specifically about people in that community who have that perception of us, that we would reach out to them with the love of Christ and share with them what Christ has done for us and what Christ can do for them, and share with them that we care and love them. I think that's very important. All right, any other rest of this that feels like you would want to clear that up, or questions that you have? Anything that still feels unclear? Lita?
Randy, I'd just like to say thank you for having us. We were recently up in Minnesota at Bryan Hills, and they lost their Methodist church, and we kind of brought up the topic to them, and they had no idea what we were talking about.
And they're a part of the church also. Lita was thinking that we had this meeting and some of their acquaintance up in Minnesota weren't sure.
And part of it is their own personal philosophy, if I go to church, her car, and.
Whatever else happens.
The rest is for a group.
Yeah, and that, I mean, it is important. I'll just say this also because of my connection with it, and this is probably the most extreme case for them. So the Northwest Texas Conference, which would be Lubbock, Amarillo, Abilene, Midland. In that conference, there are all but three of the churches in that conference are pursuing the disaffiliation process. And they are actually holding a special called Annual Conference in December or January, where that'll come to vote. And there's more details in here that you would want to know. I can tell you if you want to know later, but they are basically dissolving that annual conference. It won't exist anymore after January. All those churches are either moving to the Global Methodist Church, some of them independent. And I'm telling my friends there, well, if those three progressive churches, Rio, Texas, we'll take them. We love you over here. But that's. So that's an example, that's the most extreme example on annual conference. I mean, all but three of the churches in that conference are moving over. Yes, lucky.
Well, again, I'll second that emotion, so Lita, thank you so much for providing this information, for having me. Have the actual language.
Right.
You know, I mean, I've been a part of the United Methodist Church for, you know, I grew up in it, came back to it at basically the age of 45, and it doesn't know that this language.
Existed, yeah.
It existed within the church, and I went, okay, I'll be here. And this is at this juncture, that this language is a part, I think, that this language is a part of any church. Mystifying to me, but then that's just my opinion, and now it's not. The time to go into that, but it is interesting to, you know, we're going through all the macinations. Oh, 2024, but my thought, the sort of like Rachel's, it's like, if this language doesn't come out of the discipline, and, you know, in 2024, what did we do? What was the point? Why did all of this happen? You know, because you either support this language or you don't. How you deal with that, then at this juncture is, well, you need to disaffiliate. If you don't like, you know, if you want, want to keep this language in it, but people are going to do what they're going to do, and have a gay household, marry someone who's gay, you know, without any discipline. You know, what's the point? Why?
Well, I mean, I'll just say that, you know, people have asked that since 1972. Again, this has been a serious issue of disagreement. What is clear, and again, you know, this is not a time to get into the opinions about it, but to me, we have come to an impasse for people on these two sides. So, something's going to, and so the people are dealing this with this in different ways. Now, I'll also say this, this is my desire to have a second conversation. I don't, I don't know if we're brave enough to have it. I'm a little bit crazy, but I'll say this. What I would love to do is this, is for us to have a conversation where both of the theological and sides are explained by someone, to explain why they see that and why it's important to them, and to even allow that to be somewhat of a debate between those two. And I've been a part of that conversation when it's happened. My opinion is, there is no place within the United Methodist Church or our culture where we are allowed to have that conversation in a caring relationship, that we respect each other and listen well, and then, but be honest about it. And I was a part of that three times at the Wesleyan, we did that. Where we, we had, basically had two people have that debate in care and respect for each other. Then while we invited for the students to have that conversation, two or three or four people, that they would get together to share their feelings and thoughts about it. And the only thing that was allowed in that group is for people to ask questions to understand the other person better. And now, that's my desire for us to do next. I might be crazy, you'd be like, you're crazy. But I think it would be, to be able to have that modeled about how that conversation can happen, and then to engage that together, to me, I think it would, it would help us. So I'm willing for you to share your thoughts for me about if that, if we should go forward with that or not. But as far as this issue, as far as, you know, its implications for Berkeley, I always want to be very open about that. So it is not my intention, and I'll always challenge our leadership team for us to just be very straightforward about it. Whether that's what's happening denominationally or Berkeley-wise, I just want you to know, I have not, will not have any like hidden agendas with this or any way. And I'll say, I just, I won't even, I won't be a part of that. I want to be very open about it. And if personally you want to sit down and talk about this issue, I'm willing to get together and listen to your thoughts about it. If you want to hear my thoughts about it, I'll share that with you, and for us to have a discussion. So just, no, it's my desire to be very open about it. I don't spend a lot of time about it, on it, I'll be honest about that. I don't think about it a lot. To me, there are so many things that are more important that I'm going to put my time and energy into. But I do recognize the importance of it, and we'll give time to it as needed. There is, I put in the buzz also, there is a conversation, the Bishop Sneezy, and then Kevin, Kendall Waller, and Kevin, I can't read, I'm forgetting his name. Kendall Waller is our conference treasurer, and Kevin, oh gosh, I can't believe I'm forgetting his name. He's our conference chair of the Board of Trustees. They have a conversation on the website that is recorded, where they're talking about what I've talked about today, a little more technically and more details. And then there's a lot of information they have there. Bishop Sneezy takes a few minutes to address it. Most of this that I presented today, I learned from them at the Annual Conference, when the two of them basically gave a seminar on that. So I'm recommending you go there, because it's just, it's just very informative. Those guys know the details of this much more than I do. And then, the whole church has been invited to several conversations. The Bishop Sneezy will be hosting in different regions, and so at, my brain is not working today, our church out on 290, Oak Hill United Methodist Church is one of those that he's hosting. I'll pull up the date for that right quick. I thought it was there. Is anybody else aware of the time of that? We've seen that, got the information, but then I thought I had it right here. Okay, here we go. On October 1st, 10:00 AM, what's October 1st, what day is that? It's a Saturday morning at 10:00 AM at Oak Hill's United Methodist Church. Bishop Sneezy will be there to come here, the bishop share his heart on the state of the church, offer his perspective on the future of the United Methodist Church and the Rio, Texas Conference. Bishop will receive and answer many of your questions. We will worship together and pray together as we discern our future. So my plan is to be there for that, and so, we're welcome, maybe we could go.